No one signed in?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for February 21st, 2010 or 2011.
I see.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public comments? No one signed in?
Yes, sir.
Administration section? Mr. Roach?
Yes, sir. On A, there's a revised policy and it's gonna seem a little unusual. But due to time, the legislature passed legislation for us to be able to do that this recently. We are to get this back to the West Virginia Department of Education. It will not be out on review, but we do not have time to meet the deadlines. Is that about it, Ms. Powell?
That's correct.
And so, it is not unusual. The needs are normally the same, so it's not that big a deal. On B, if you recall, this is the walkway, the eighty-twenty. So this is to proceed and then we have to come up with our $20,000 on our end to submit to the West Virginia Department of Transportation. And they will do all the work and everything. On the refund, if there is a refund, and we doubt there is, then it would be split eighty-twenty. In other words, if there's $10,000 left, they would get $8,000, we would get $2,000. On C...
Excuse me, yes, sir. Now, who will actually bid this project out?
They do.
They do?
We do not do anything. We...you know, they do everything, it's kind of a turnkey job.
Do we submit twenty to them, or do they submit?
We submit twenty to them.
And they take care of all the financial person?
Yes. C is specialized healthcare, which you're familiar with, where we give a stipend. D, this is travel for Jerika Means, and I'm not sure, there's some others that may be going in a vocational apartment to participate in Skills USA competition, which we support. E is self-explanatory. F is self-explanatory. I would like to pull G. This is...this show up again next week, or next time we meet, along with David Roberts' resignation. And then this will be following that resignation on the agenda. So it's premature, and I'd like to pull G off, please. And then H.
H is a personnel policy procedure. What I would like to do, since we haven't adopted our policies and procedures, I would like to include the interview process into the policy, which is not...it's not there right now. And what I would like to do is, is change the interview procedure so that instead of using the curriculum team to interview candidates, that we use our assistant superintendent, who is also the director personnel. And she has...and basically, she would have the ability to... If she wanted to have other people in the interview with her, then she could do that. But what we would do is, we would be freeing up the curriculum team for the interview process, because currently, right now, that's what we're doing.
So are we talking about...what interviews exactly are we talking about? Administrative interviews?
All of them.
Teacher interviews?
Professional professionals.
Superintendent interviews? What are we talking about?
Professionals.
Professional.
All professional interviews?
All professional interviews.
Yeah, I'm not sure...again, there's a reason that we do the curriculum team, but as far as teachers, the curriculum team, I don't think's involved as a whole. Ms. Lucas might involve, if it's a math teacher, or two or three that she wants to interview, she might get different people. But when it comes to administration interviews, then I've been using the curriculum team. And Mr. Matthews does not want me to do that.
I feel that the use of the curriculum team, basically, for them, I think that that takes them away from their position, from what they're doing. And sometimes, whenever you're interviewing maybe three or four or five candidates for a position, then basically what that does is it takes them away from their job. When we actually pay our assistant superintendent, and she is also the one posting the positions, and we...basically, we will utilize her. And that's what I...that's what I...what I would like to see going in our policy. And just actually add that to our policy.
My position, although we disagree, you know, with this, what's the purpose of mine using curriculum team? Again, not with teachers, but administrations are key positions. Ones that we live with and die with, so to speak. Make...they make decisions that affect everybody on the curriculum team. When I say that, that's kind of all aspects. You know, you have assessment people, you have social studies, whatever, assistant superintendent. So when they...when a person's come up through the system, normally, they have a chance to know this person from all different facets of their different jobs. I do not think one person, for example, Ms. Lucas...and nothing against Ms. Lucas, but the same thing that was in Cavill, not one person knows them as well as several people know them. Because, again, different things they come in contact with. As a teacher, Miss...they may be a math person, and Mr. Mitt Kidd may know a lot of things where Ms. Lucas wouldn't know. And I just believe that it's a good process. And I also think, and I'm not sure legally, but I think this is under the superintendent's jurisdiction. I'm not sure a policy can override my responsibility and duties as superintendent, but I would not bet my life on it. You know what I'm saying? I'm not willing to say that, because I'd have to ask legal counsel for that information, and I haven't done that.
Well, what I was...
I think superintendent's recommendations required for hiring any professional personnel.
That's true, but...
But we are...but what I'm talking about is, I'm not talking about the superintendent's recommendation. I'm talking about the interview process.
But again, that's...
And if...if the assistant superintendent feels that she would need a committee, then she could choose a committee. And basically, what she would do is, she makes a recommendation to the superintendent. And what you have now is you don't have the curriculum team. And I've...I've heard a lot of complaints regarding people on the curriculum team feeling... They feel like some...some members of the curriculum team feel like that. They're taking away from their job. And they feel like that it's not their job to do, actually, make recommendations for hiring. Because currently, what happens is, the curriculum team, they go in, they sit in on the interview, and then they go in individually and tell Mr. Roach who they want, or who they feel like is the best candidate.
And why?
Okay? And then, and this is a secret ballot type thing. So Mr. Roach finally makes the deci...he makes the decision based on what the...whoever, ever, how many people are involved with this interview process. But the concern is, from people who are...who are on the curriculum team, is that they feel like that this is an extremely...extreme amount of pressure that they're being put on to do this. So I would like to change the interview process, where the assistant superintendent actually does the interview. She chooses to have a committee to interview, and she can do that. And then she makes the recommendation to the superintendent.
Mr. Matthews?
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask Mr. Roach a question. Is this...very often, is it that the curriculum team is overridden in any way?
No, ma'am.
Selection?
No, ma'am.
It has been in the past.
Well, if you're talking about your...
My daughter.
Daughter, that's the only one that possibly, I've never known anybody to ever say differently. I haven't overridden anybody.
Only my daughter, right?
Well, again, I didn't do...the process is different. I didn't speak to them individually. I changed the process after your daughter, and now I enter...or speak to each individual. And I also think that...well, I...that's all I want to say, I mean... So therefore, if you're asking me if I've overridden the curriculum team or the interview people, no, I have not done that.
I was just wondering how important they are, if their selection is not chosen.
Well, I think they're very important. That's how come I do it, because I value the curriculum team, their knowledge of the candidates from different aspects of their positions. And it's very helpful for me to determine the best candidate. And again, they all suffer the consequences, or are rewarded due to the abilities of that person, because they all have to pay a price. If they're not very good, then they all have to work extra hard. And they have a role in it, in my opinion. Also, would want to say, I don't think it's appropriate timing. And I believe people would question why you would do that. When I'm superintendent, I'm gonna be gone in June. And I'm...do not agree with Mr. Matthews' position. And I think that it's...it's a little unusual to bring this forth. And as far as pressure, that I knew they had some pressure, but it's not...it's coming from other places. It's not coming from me. Well...
Well, I think it's with the seeding of personnel in place. Very familiar with the applicant. And if she's not, you know, she's always at the rise line, and as Matthew said, she's pulling in a curriculum team.
Well, I'd like to say, just legally, and we might just not even worry about this discussion, I'm not sure you all have the power to do this. In other words, it is quite clear, I think legally...now, this is me speaking. Again, I have one attorney, as you all would too. I don't think you can infringe upon my duties as superintendent. Your duty is to reject or accept my candidate. You cannot get involved, in my opinion, into the selection process by saying who I can use and who I can't. Furthermore, you cannot delegate something that I choose to my assistant superintendent, whose I'm over. She is a subordinate of mine, and I choose this process. So I just think it's a little unusual to try to take some powers away from the superintendent at this time, when I think it's worked very well for the last four years, given the exception that you said, Carol. And I don't know that, because, again, I didn't talk to him individually, so I can't...
Well, I would like to interject. We're not taking...I mean, this is not to take any power away from the superintendent, because ultimately, the superintendent makes the recommendation to the board. We're not changing that. There's nothing that is being...is being changed there.
So why involve yourself?
Well, I think it's important that whenever we have concerns from the people in the county, that we need to address the concerns.
Again, first of all...
And, excuse me, I have a thought.
Yes, you do.
And what I'm...what I am proposing is that we include the interview process in our policies. And I think we have every right to include whatever we want in our policies. And I don't think we're...we are not infringing upon our superintendent at all.
I think you are.
Well, excuse me, I do have a thought, okay? And I think you've made your point. So what...that is...that is what my proposal is. And if you want to reject it, you can reject. If you want to accept it, then you can accept.
Well, I think we need some time to talk about it further and think about it. I mean, you just bring up a proposal right enough. I must make a decision, and we haven't even gotten all the facts. I'd like to talk to Ms. Lucas, for one thing. I mean, is this something that happens every week? Are you interviewing people that you use the curriculum team every week, every month, twice a year? I mean, how much time are we talking about? And it's unfair to ask you this at this time, because you haven't had a chance to go back and look at your...your schedule. And that's...I think we need more information. Now, that's what I think.
Well, I personally, I think we need to wait till new superintendent comes aboard. They may have a different way of...
Completely.
Doing it, so I really...I think personally, I think we need to wait till new superintendent comes aboard.
I'd be in agreement with that.
Yeah. I am too. I'm kind of like Donnie, and I've...I've never had a complaint from any curriculum team member. So this is totally, you know, caught me off by surprise. But I think any curriculum team member that felt uncomfortable would always have the right to opt out and not participate if they wanted to. But I...like, I'm...there's a lot of questions I have here. Mr. Roach has posed some, maybe what Mr. Curry's proposed here, that we think about it now to give him a chance, maybe, to look at the legal aspect of it. And I...any...I'm not even sure what, you know, our policy is right now. I like to be able to see something in writing, and whatever you might propose. Okay, I'd like to see that in writing, too.
I would too.
And then, and I keep coming back to whether OPA or OPEA, if there were some of their past recommendations, or requirements, or whatever, when they come in, that have...it seems to me at some point that they had some statements about curriculum teams being involved in this. And I just think we need to research this before we jump in. Then, at the time that it comes in, I like to be able to see it. I'm a visual.
I understand, I understand. The only thing is...
I'm a research person.
I understand it. I think what I'm going on is, is just the fact that we do have individuals. And I can give you their name after the...after the meeting. But who have...who are...who have definite concerns.
Right. But do you not agree that if they chose that they...you know, come to do, they could always say, hey, I don't want to do this?
Well, I think there's...there's more to it. And I could...I'll...I could talk to you about it after the meeting, and I don't want to discuss this.
Okay, I understand, but I'm just saying...
Hopefully, I mean, in front of a, you know...
But I'm just saying, if somebody felt uncomfortable, I would think that they could talk to Ms. Lucas and say, you know, I just don't feel that I want to be away from school and...
Right.
And that kind of thing.
But...but what I was getting to is, you know, we're not taking...we would not be taking anything away from the superintendent. The only thing that we would be do...we would be doing would be changing the interview process. And another thing, I think it would make us more efficient. Because right now, wherever you are pulling people away from their duties, that makes you less efficient. And I think it's an efficiency issue. So you don't have to...
I want to say one thing, I'm sorry.
No, excuse me.
I'm sorry. The thing that I think is important to know that...
Excuse me.
It is taking something away from the superintendent. Because I am the superintendent during the interview process, so when you change it, you are taking that from me, so that is changing.
Well, here's the thing. You know, whenever I say we want to move on, we're gonna do that.
I'm ready.
But I don't appreciate you doing that.
I don't appreciate you not giving me a chance to speak. You did have an opportunity. I had something else to say.
So, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to take some time for H, when we can do that...
Is that all that is? Is that what this item is?
That's what the...
Okay, well, I had no idea what it was.
That's what the item was.
Well, at some point, I would like to...I don't know how you feel the proper procedure, but to do some investigating, I don't know if that's proper terminology, as to some of these issues that have been brought up tonight. You know, is this an administrative issue, or is this a board issue?
Well, you know, I think policy is a board issue.
Well, I would like to get a legal interpretation of that.
But, you know, we can, you know, as far as when we have...when we're having trouble with...with interviews, with the process, with efficiency, with people who do not want to be included in that. And maybe they have...maybe they feel like that they can't address the superintendent, okay? Plus, clearly, you know, if...if we want to move in a particular direction, then, you know, sometimes...
Well, I understand what you're saying there.
You know, especially whenever, you know, he won't refrain from speaking.
Well, he's not speaking now. I'm just...if it's permissible, I'd like for him to say that if, you know, if we could get some legal interpretation as to where, you know, where does this ultimately lie? But at one time, I...getting back to the efficiency issue, I know in past years, we would conduct these interviews after school. So there wasn't really taking anybody out of class. So I think there's a lot of things that we need to think about. But if we...if we want to get into it further, you know, once again, they don't have to participate, but, you know, they don't have to do the interviews during the school hours, they do after school. But this, the legal issue, we could approach that sometime?
Right, but I think it's...I think it's important. I think it's something that we should look at, something that we should address, especially whenever we have concerns.
I agree.
If there's concerns that are brought to us as a board, as a board, or as board members, I think we need to address it.
Well, I agree too, to see...
Right.
None of the rest of us are aware of it.
Well, I didn't...but the thing, but, you know, it was...it's something, that's why I brought it up. It's something that we can discuss.
Can I just say one thing? I had talked about this before, I think, that we, you know, I mean, we have all kinds of ideas, and we go workshops, and we learn all kinds of things, and all kinds of research. But I still think that if we...every...maybe every three months, or whatever we decide, if we have a work session, we can bring these ideas in and discuss them, and research them, and bring information, and enough information to decide whether that's a sound decision or not. I mean, I'd like to see us go in that direction, myself. So that, you know, that we have a little bit of time to think about things and research. I'd still like for us to do that, if we sit around.
I think it's healthy conversation.
I am too.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the...the items on the agenda for the administrative section.
I moved except for G.
You want to...okay, we will...
We'll omit G and...
And A.
I don't know if we're admitting A, or we discussed it, or so...
We can table H.
Okay, we'll table H and remove G. I moved, we approved the rest.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Finance?
Okay, we have invoices to be approved, $771,000. $84,000.
There's a new total.
Oh, was there a new total?
Yeah, $805,000. $754.94.
Probably left in the office, Darla had...
She worked up some more things.
I have invoices here, if you have questions. We also...item B is an agreement with the 4H and West Virginia University Cooperative. That's the levy money that is allocated to the 4H program. It's just an agreement for their $15,000. It's in here, sir.
At the bottom.
Kind of the order.
Item C is accounting pensions of Cleveland Dale Cooper. And item D is January monthly financial statements.
Can I ask you a question about the financial statements, please?
Sure can.
On page thirteen or fourteen, I just...well, it's your page, I don't know how you've written it at the bottom.
On the bottom.
But just...I'd just like for you to clarify for me, because I'm a little bit confused. If you go down about, oh...
Under which...
Fifteen, Legal Services is on the left there. On the...on page thirteen.
Right.
Legal Services. Okay? And then, it has a figure over here of one per fiscal year, 2001, 132. Okay, see that figure there?
For Legal Services on page thirteen?
Well, it's... You know, is that 32,400? 32,000?
Oh, that's administrative, other. 132,400.
No, well, right above it is Legal.
Legal, 32,400 is the legal.
Okay, and that is for what period of time, Bernie?
That is from July 1 through January 31st.
July 1 through...
January 31st. That's cash payments.
Okay, so $32,000, right? Okay, now, on the next page, this is where I'm getting confused. If we go down in the center there, General Fund, we go down four, we get Legal Services. And now we've got 82,530. Now, what period of time does that cover?
I think the 82,530 is Operation Building.
That's Operation Building.
Well, wait a minute. Is that...I'll just count, though, the first one really doesn't have a number. Okay, well, okay, then...then I have the same question that, I guess it's... Are you saying it's...I don't know what the number is. Does Permanent Improvement not have a...
4-1 in the...
Is that the...like the cover, the...
There is some legal cost in there, but it is lumped in with land acquisition, because it is the cost of acquiring that land. So it's not separated out in this report, Steve. I can do a more detailed report and give you the legal costs.
But on this Legal Services, it's the zero, then?
It's zero for the Permanent Improvement Fund.
See, because I was thinking that...what's confusing me, I guess, is where it says Permanent Improvement. I was thinking that that was the first, you know, that was the fourth one down, and it was the 82,530. And I was just trying to see...
It's zero, but it's not that one.
But we do have...but we do have legal costs in the Permanent Improvement Fund, but it is included in land acquisition, and it will be a part of the total cost of that land once we've completely owned that land.
Okay, have we done any...is there anything that's been done, or that would show us the amount of legal fees that we pay in this fiscal year?
For the Permanent Improvement Fund?
For any fund there is.
Okay, well, yes, the General Fund, you've got that, you already had that. The General Fund, legal fees is 32,400. Now, that's what we've paid.
Okay, but that does not count the land acquisitions?
No, because that's in a different fund. This is just your General Fund Legal Services.
So since July the first through December the 31st?
Yeah, probably December 31st would then pay in January. So that would be about six months.
So we've got another month or two since then, that we may have paid some money.
January, we...January 5th, we probably have not been paid.
I guess what I'd like to know is how much money we've spent on legal fees. Whenever, you know, nothing urgent, I'm just being curious.
You mean, like, for professional issues like degrees?
The only thing that I would...I would just separate land acquisition. I mean, you could say, well, land acquisition, we spent this much, and then everything else, we spent this much. I'm just curious as to how much...
And that's real easy to get, Steve, it's just very simple, I can break it down.
No, I'm sorry, this way that was down there, on the second page confused me, because it didn't have a... Any numbers there. Thank you.
I will get it for you.
No hurry, Mr. Cooper.
Would it be okay if I would just email it to you now? Somebody check their email? Fred, you check your email?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
My email, every dial.
All right, good deal. I moved the financial.
I second the motion. Is any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The odds have... Let's move to Personnel. Before we go into Personnel, I would like to go into Executive Session regarding Personnel. Before we go into this, our Personnel, I'd like to go into Executive Session regarding your Personnel issue.
Regarding your Personnel issues?
Yes, ma'am.
Not regarding this Personnel issue?
No, not regarding this Personnel schedule.
Are you making that motion, Kate?
I will make that motion.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The odds have...we are now in Executive Session.
Trying to keep my lips locked. Well, you know how I am, Steve.
All right. Ms. Lucas?
Did he switch to?
Yes.
You will notice this is the...is a very lengthy Personnel schedule, and that is due to, literally, we have to report to you anyone that's going to be on transfer for next year, being re-employed. So if you want me to start at the very beginning, I will do so. At the top, employment of professional personnel contingent to upward insurance of first-class permit. As a teacher for a science physician in arts, intermediate. Employment of professional personnel for our psychologist physician that was vacated earlier. Employment of substitute service personnel. Employment of Substitute Service Personnel. Transfer of Professional Personnel for next school year.
So Mr. Sacks will stay at the high school?
The rest of this year.
The rest of this year?
But he become, he becomes principal on July one?
That's right, that's right.
Transfer of Service Personnel for the next school year. Then the reemployment of the short, long-term administrative personnel for next school year. And then the reemployment of short and long-term professional personnel for next school year. Then the reemployment of short and long-term professional personnel, school nurse, for next school year. Then at the bottom, is the reemployment of short, long-term professional personnel for next school year pending the renewal of their certification. And the next page is the reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a probationary contract for the next school year. And then the reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a probationary contract pending the renewal of their certification.
Help me understand this, Tricia. Now, does, does this mean that they're out of field?
Now, that means that they're...
Although some of them are out of field.
Some of them could be, but some of them are teaching what they're, it's in their spiel, it's just, at June thirtieth, they need to take some more hours to stay...
Six hours.
Yes, until they get their permanent...
Doesn't necessarily mean they're out of field.
No, it does.
It could be out of field.
Could be, but...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the next page is reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a continuing And then professional personnel to be issued a continuing contract pending the renewal of their certification. If they get certified, then they get a continuing contract. And the next page is the reemployment of service personnel to be issued a probationary And reemployment of service personnel to be issued a continuing contract. And then we start into the substitute service personnel to be re-employed for next school And then, we get to the termination of extracurricular, professional, and service contracts.
Are these all of the extracurricular, professional, and service contracts, are they only for one year, every year?
Uh-huh. And there at the last page. Then we go to the... Then we have the leave of absence for one teacher, that's due to Mickolay, and then retirement of Dela Seale, and then you all can talk about the other part on there.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but there's one category here that I'll have to abstain from voting on, reemployment of short and long-term professional personnel for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. My wife is on there.
Thank you.
Yes?
Then we vote out, I'll have to recuse myself from Heart Intermediate, first condition with Maureen Galligan, for short and long-term compensation. Add it. I may be entertaining to add it for Maureen Galligan.
Okay, I wish these were numbers like A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Mr. Priestley?
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait a minute, Miss, wait a minute. You want to go ahead and...
Yeah, I was, I was going, I was trying to think how best to do this. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Personnel Section, with the exception of the reemployment of short and long-term professional personnel, but I'm not sure if that's, should somebody exclude that and then we vote on it, I'm not sure.
I'll tell you what, because I wanted to vote on the suspension of the professional personnel separate as well.
Well, we need to.
Yeah, we have to find a way. Which one was your, which one was your vote?
Reemployment of short, long-term professional personnel for two thousand eleven, twelve.
Well, you could vote the rest, I'm exempt.
Well, that's kind of what I was...
Yeah, what I'd do, it'd be easier, if you just pulled each one of those separately, voted, and then...
That's right.
Vote on everything at the end. Pull yours, then they vote.
Okay, and vote on the rest.
Pull Carol's, then vote, you know, and then we got four motions, three.
Give me to the...
Go ahead, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion that we, that we accept the reemployment of short and long-term professional, professional personnel for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year, make sure that we're not, that Mr. Priestley recuses himself. All those in favor? I might need a second on that motion.
I say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so we have it.
So I would, I'll make a motion that we, we hire the, we act on the reemployment for short, long-term administrative personnel for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year, and the reemployment of short and long-term professional personnel for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year, pending renewal of certification. No, excuse me.
Get me a strike.
Strike that. It'll be the first one. The employment of the professional personnel contingent upon issuance of the first class permit.
I say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Carol stands.
Carol stands, she recused herself. All right.
Now, actually, let me strike this.
Well, we'll go ahead, we'll just go ahead and do the suspension of the...
Oh, okay.
Okay? The motion is to uphold the superintendent's suspension without paper two days, February the eighteen, two thousand eleven, and February the twenty-first, two thousand eleven, for a new one teacher. That's the motion.
Our motion.
I know, I said.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is the identity not being revealed?
No.
Okay.
I think we're, we, it's supposed to be...
It can be now. I was just advised by Howard Sufer that until the board takes action, that I'm not put the name out there, in case the board would decide not to do it.
I'll share that with you.
That person's name would be out there for everyone to see, but you can release it now.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve all other sections.
Say.
Didn't that make, did we cover the administrative funds?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Fine.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
You said, you said my pick of the question. One for us.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Board comments, concerns, file those interview questions and schedule.
Have we received all of the applications now?
Yes.
This year, President?
Yes.
How many we have?
Does it count if they're postmarked by four o'clock, so you might get one tomorrow, possibly?
Maybe one tomorrow.
Just so they're postmarked back today.
When is the last day?
By today.
Today.
Postmarked back today.
Four o'clock. So it's possible, but unlikely.
Now, will those names be released to the press?
Currently, right now, we have seven.
Seven?
There's a lot of interest.
Are we going to release those to the press, is that what we decided early on, that we'd release those names?
I thought we would go through the, kind of like, we would have a day, we would sit down, and we'd look at...
Make a short list.
You can show it, and then we can release it to the press.
You can do it later, you don't have to do it immediately, but you should do it.
Because I was...
Just trying to say, Sean, a question.
Thanks, sir.
Because of the sunshine, we can't cover.
But you have a right to see him and review him.
Yeah, we haven't even seen him.
Right, right.
But there was...
Seven, so far.
Yeah, there was a particular person that seemed that they would want to, kind of...
Okay, that's interesting.
Kind of hold off as long as you can.
That's fine. Now, we also, at this point, we want to discuss the interview questions and the schedule. Are we going to do that open when you're...
Can we do that during, whatever we do, or when we look at the, when we look at candidates and applicants? I think that would probably be the best way to do that.
Have a work session?
We need, yeah, we need to have a work session on it.
We can discuss a lot of things.
I think part of this, that would be the schedule, part in writing.
Right.
Yeah, because some of this, you know, I think maybe even the questions, there may be things that you might want to discuss.
Maybe change some questions.
I just, you know, twiddle.
That is what I'm doing.
Two weeks, I'd say, what about Carol?
Carol, when would you like to have a work session?
You guys can go ahead and schedule it, doesn't it need to be densely?
No.
What about next one?
Do it in the day, or evening?
I like to do it in the evening.
Well, how about next Monday?
Sounds good.
That's the fourteenth.
It's a good day.
Five, three.
It's a good day.
It's a ten, so about ten.
Would, at five o'clock, five-thirty, what if everybody, five-thirty be okay? Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, is that good with you?
That's good, I think.
All right.
I assume part of that would be an executive session, we'd discuss the...
But it'll convene openly.
Yes.
A picture of you fine people.
How about a fine picture of those people?
You want me to move on with the horse? Yeah, the property expenditures.
This was created for you all, just to have one for you, Carol, just by, this just explains and assesses the unfunded balance, if things proceed the way they have been going with the hearings. We're talking about property, with the Hearts property, we will have an unfunded balance of four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven hundred and eighty-one cents.
Four hundred and sixty-three thousand?
I mean, that, what did I say?
Four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Oh, I went sixty-three. Four hundred and sixty-three thousand, excuse me. Having said that, we, we can cover this from our general funds, but we are still looking to, you know, get more money to help us off balance, offset this cost. But I think this is all we can tell you right now, you can see what we have in the unfunded balance, and hopefully that will come down over time. I just wanted to share that with you for your information. I don't have anything else to say on it, unless you have...
I just had a question as to when we were going to deal with some of the...
I would assume that your attorney would let you know, I think you have the hearing soon?
I'm talking about the ones that have already occurred.
No, but that's what I'm saying, I believe I would ask him, I don't have the authority to really know, other than getting the legal advice, when that's supposed to be done.
Well, I guess it seems to me like we, at some point, need to schedule an executive session to discuss, you know, the ones that have already occurred, and the future ones.
What about Monday?
That's what I'll say, maybe we can do it on Monday.
Let me just take care of, yeah, we'll kill two birds with one stone.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Okay, I also have, it's not on the agenda, but just being board concerns that this is, I would like to thank Governor Tomlin and Secretary of Transportation Paul Maddie, Jr., and what this is, we had a second egress, I think, at the, towards the Hearts, and they originally had given us permission through a permit, and then it was kind of revoked, and we appealed it, and these two gentlemen helped us, and they're going to take off the curve of the road there, that will make it a lot clearer to see.
Oh, wow.
And possibly, and don't hold me to this, maybe even a turning lane. So that is very nice of them, and I just want to thank them publicly.
That's so much safety.
Yes, for our students. Also, I would like to bring up the, we have a resource officer at the high school, you know, that we have through a grant, and I think last year we contributed, am I correct, Brenda? That we contributed last year to keep this person?
Yes, we did.
And it will be, it will appear on the next agenda, but because of a need for the Hamlin City Council, or the Hamlin Mayor, and both, they needed a letter from me saying it would be okay, that we will support twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars of our money towards this police officer. So I have a letter ready to go, if you would give me consent, knowing it's going to be on the agenda. If you have problems, of course, I do not want to send that letter of support until that time, but it's twenty-five thousand, it's for the resource officer.
Does that have to sell?
I assume there's a lot more to that than twenty-five, counting benefits and everything else, just logic is telling me, I have no clue.
I'd say get it in the mail.
I agree.
I do too.
Okay, we'll proceed on that. The other thing I have is number four, and I'll tell you how this got to my attention. We get, from the School Boarding Authority, we get sheets where it says the schedule of counties to go up and give presentations by the President and the Superintendent for Needs Projects. Carol, you remember doing that, and Carol also knows that they asked us not to come back until we would run a bond, and our name is not on there, because I took them at their word, they didn't really want, not want to fund us until we made some local attempts. I would like to proceed, I am somewhat familiar with the process, having been involved, to get a proposal to hire an architect, the architect is not paid, but would be the understanding that the person normally that you pay to help you get ready to run a bond, then they would get to work, you know what I'm saying, if a bond passed, and it's just normal procedure, you always do the architect, we follow... And it's just normal procedure. You always do the architect, we follow the SBA criteria and the architectural, whatever that's called, document. And then I would probably get a member of the board, myself, maybe Dana, and interview the architects that would submit. And the process, so we can proceed doing this. And I think it's a must for us to fulfill our comprehensive educational facilities document that you all were involved with, or somewhat, some of you were, that we did. And I just feel like it's good timing for me to proceed with that, next superintendent coming in, then we'd kind of just have things ready and going. And it would be in the process, but it's a lot of public relations work, and again, the board's involved and the county's people involved. It's not an isolated, you know, one or two people doing it. In order to pass, you, you have to get the county involved and certain people, you know, representatives, so I'm just saying it would be good to do this. It's more work on me, but then again, I think for us to go next year and try to submit a project, we should have already in place, you know, a scenario of passing a bond. Here's what we'd do, here's what we'd like from you. In the past, and Carol, you can probably vouch for this, when you run a bond and you, and it's always contingent, if it passes, then you'll get this kind of much money. And usually, in the past, you're always the first. The first counties that pass the bond are the first ones funded in the past. So I'm just saying it's a win-win for us and for the future, you know, of that CEFP getting it implemented or trying to implement, get it implemented.
Let me ask you, Mr. Esch, as far as, at this point, you're just wanting to go ahead and look at the possibility of architects that would be involved?
Yeah, I would have a proposal, I'd send it and advertise in the papers, get proposals back, then an interview team would interview them.
Okay, then after the architect is, is chosen, that firm would then develop a bond call?
Would help us to get ready. At some point, when we get to that point, there's usually a legal person involved, yes. But at the bond call, I would think that we would be involved in that.
That was my question, at some point, at that phase, I suppose, then, if we wanted to involve community members and all that, looking at our tenure facility plan to help, or to actually direct the architect as to what priorities we had?
Yes, sir. And the board, of course, always is the last one that must approve whatever's, they get the final say.
And, and the architecture firm, whichever one is hired, will do all this preliminary work for free?
Yes, normally that is the case. If there's drawings, for example, we're out there and somebody wanted a schematic done, we may have to pay for that. If they want a sketch just to help them see what this might look like, then that's probably free, but I would want, I would like to reserve the right to come back to make sure I'm right on that. But it's usually no cost upfront. And but, but again, their end is if it's passed, then they, they would suspect that they would get to work because.
Usually, they'd have some kind of agreement that we'd have to arrange to say.
Yes. So I just need a consensus of permission to move forward, and again, there would be an interview process and then come back to board to hire the architect. If that's what I need, kind of permission to go forward.
Follow the government, I think.
I think.
The only choice we have.
Yes, ma'am, I'm with you.
It's true. We need, I mean, we have a CEFP now, we need to act on it.
Yeah, we're kind of stuck right now.
There's some with it.
That's all I have right now.
Is anyone else have anything else?
I just have a couple of things. We went to the, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Priestley, I went to the School Board Association in Charleston. And I just want to mention a few things for the people who weren't there and really interact in my own line. The OPEB lawsuit is now in the Supreme Court, and the way I understood it, it's forty-nine counties now that are participating in that lawsuit. So that's all they knew at that time, so, so it's still in the Supreme Court. Our training sessions from now on, we will still have, they're still planning it, followed with a conference, you know, to get our seven hours. But the rest of, they won't have any more driving conferences statewide. They're proposing to do recent trainings via video conference, so that we wouldn't have to go to a meeting somewhere in Charleston, we could just go to a recent. So they're setting, they're in the process of setting that up and hope that we'll be ready by the fall. And the whole aspect or the whole direction of the School Board Association is, has in the past been more a training group, but now they'd like to move to not only continue the training, but to be an advocacy group for educational issues, especially in the school.
Legally advocate, a legal advocate, legislature?
Yes, yes. And the way we can help with that is to work with our local legislators, I mean, individual help. So, and they've asked that I be allowed to, again, serve as a co-director from our recent executive board, School Board Association. And I will do that without your permission.
We will do it.
Okay. All right, fine.
For the information about our board's policies, they're, they're online. We're going through the last go-around to make the final check, but most of them are correct and accurate, online. And as soon as we're completed, which is right around the corner, next meeting, I'll probably be asking for dates that you all could meet. It's going to be a long day, but one of the things they asked me was, the cabinet would like for you to get the policies and then you review them, and then if you had questions, they would be here to ask, instead of them coming in, going through each policy with you, do you know what I mean by that?
The cabinet, you mean the administrative people?
Yeah, you have the, you would do the legwork on reading them, they would come in and answer any questions about the policies that you would have. And I would have them all here all day. Now, I don't mind which way you do it, they just think that'd be easier for them versus trying to go through each policy and you don't even want to go through it because it's state law, you know, or something. So you all think about that, the next meeting, just let me know.
Sounds good. Does anyone else have anything else?
I'll move the new journal.
Until March 21st?
No, until the 14th is 5:30.
14th, 5:30.
All right.
All right, motion's on the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.